Here, Lord, thank you so much for this opportunity to meet together as a group.
Lord bless this new board and all the members, all the old members and the new members that are coming on. Lord, give us the opportunity to help our children and guide us in all that we do and all the decisions that we make, Lord. Help us in our decision making that we can do what's right for these children and in our entire community and lift ourselves up to do in Christ.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Randy Rentsch.
Here.
Bo Barton. Melinda Ballard.
Here.
Barry Glass.
Here.
Maria Bass.
Here.
Gary Castles.
Here.
Johnny Fallon.
Here.
Though he's on his way, he's running late, so. There he is.
There he is.
I just called him.
I'm here.
All right, item A is executive committee report. All the checks look good, everything, everything looked good, went through all that, everything seems to be in order. One thing that I would like to point out is that sales taxes were down twenty-two percent this month compared at this time last year. I don't know if there's anything that has to do with that and what happened to that.
Still, still up to the year, just a couple of years left to sign.
So we understand.
I didn't compare to last year.
We're twenty-two percent over, yeah.
Than last year.
Yeah. Now, for the year, you said we're up.
We're up for the year.
We're up for the year.
Did I just comparing December last year?
We're up two percent, almost two and a half percent for the year. All right, thank you, Randy. Item B is swearing in of board members, Mr. Recox is here to do that. You bring your.
I did.
She said she'll take care of everybody.
You want us to stand up?
If I have to repeat after me, I say to name.
I will announce.
Do solemn swear affirm.
Do solemn swear affirm.
That I was court constitution.
That I was court constitution.
And the laws of United States.
And the laws of United States.
And the constitution.
And the constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All duties.
All duties.
Incummit upon me.
Incummit upon me.
As school board member.
As school board member.
According to best of my ability.
According to best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marie. All right, item C is approved December eighth, twenty-two, medium minutes. All in favor of saying aye? Item D is recognized Crystal Buffington as Taylor &amp; Sons Employee of the Month, Mr. Freeman.
Yes, sir, I'm here, thank you, Miss Crystal. Good evening, board members and new board members, I'm Julie Freeman and I represent Taylor &amp; Sons Insurance Financial Services. And it is our pleasure to partner a team with Caldwell Parish School Board to recognize and employ you the month each year. And our president, our little pan out of the bag, is Crystal Buffington. And let me tell you a little bit about Crystal, I think I had the opportunity to meet her just a few moments ago, but she's not new to the Child and Christian programs, but she's new in her present life. This year she was promoted to manager where she oversees the cafeteria at Caldwell Junior High. Just in the short time that she's been manager, Crystal has shown strong leadership qualities for both her staff and in our Child and Christian program. She is one of the hardest workers I have and expects the same from her staff. Mama says. Crystal takes her roles and responsibilities as manager very seriously and seldom misses work. She works very well with everyone, including the staff and the students at the junior high, and she's always willing to take suggestions that help to make her cafeteria more successful. Crystal is the manager, but she does not just sit in the office, she will do whatever we need when we need her to do it. And it ends by saying she also deals with all of our shenanigans. So January twenty-twenty-three Caldwell Parish School Board Employee of the Month, Miss Crystal Buffington. For her dedication and her commitment to your community, your schools and your children, proudly sponsored by Taylor &amp; Sons Insurance and Financial Services. I give you a Caldwell Parish twenty-twenty-three, January twenty-twenty-three Employee of the Month, Miss Crystal Buffington.
I probably told her that, you know, I'll expect a five or ten minute speech, but she did.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
That works. Proud of you, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
All right, item B is Barry Glass, award for recognizing the member award to Trey Brooks and was chosen as member of the All American Dream Team twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, Trey, thirty years ago, I started acknowledging and recognizing kids from my community and the community of Caldwell Parish. I've started my thirtieth and final term here, so I wanted to go back to my roots, which is to acknowledge those who have done some good things. According to statistics, a kid like you is not supposed to be in the position and the condition that you are. You're not supposed to make it, you'd have all these odds against you. But you have been able to excel and go beyond that. Back six months ago, you received a great German shepherd from me. I didn't know I would be giving you this award tonight. I talked to your dad, he told me that when you're not practicing football, you're doing your homework. When you're not out in the streets, which is good, you're at home trying to do something that's positive. So because you have tried to do something positive, I wanted to do something positive for you by acknowledging the things that you've done. Give you some attributes and tell you that, don't let nobody tell you that you can't go where you want to go, no matter who it is, where they come from, and what they look like. You have done a good job, you have done a great job, and I hope that you will continue to do another good job. So I bought this to give to you and present to you. And good luck and congratulations, this is not just for you. If, Kayla, if you don't mind, I would like for him to take a picture with the board.
Yeah. I'll tell you what's right.
I'm real good. Take me real hard.
Some of us sit down, some of us stand up.
Yeah.
Can you come here?
And then we'll slide it out.
Between Gear and I.
Ready, okay. One, two, three, look at me. Okay, okay.
All right, before we go to item L, we've got an addendum that, Kim, you want to talk about it?
Okay, I'm going to read it. Yes, yes. The addendum is regarding our people progression plan, it's a required addendum to include the new law, basically to fifteen-sixty-six. And I put a copy in your folder, says beginning with the twenty-twenty-two.
Right now we're just adding, with this addendum.
We've got to add it first.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, we're adding it. Okay. Explanation later? Yes.
That's good enough, probably, this means a motion to add it, right?
It should have been lifted off.
I don't know what I'm adding.
We're not taking action until we.
Yeah, we're going to do.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Then we add it? All right. Do we have a second?
We've got to have a little call.
That's why we're on the side.
Yeah, just to put it on the agenda and then you guys can get to it a little bit. So to add it, we'll have Mr. Randy Rentsch.
Yes.
To add it to the agenda, Mr. Bo Barton.
Yes.
Miss Melinda Ballard.
Yes.
Barry Glass.
Yes.
Gary Bass.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Castles.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnny Fallon.
Yes.
All right.
All right. All right, item L, it's resolution to name the Caldwell Watsons to be official journal for twenty-twenty-three.
Living every year.
So we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge Caldwell Watson as the official.
Yeah, but I'm going to vote for that, but I would like to talk to you outside, outside of the vote about some of the recordings that need to be recorded, so I'm going to vote okay.
All right, do we have a second? All right, all in favor? All right, item G, it's resolution to appoint the Caldwell Parish School Board President and Vice President for twenty-twenty-three.
You want to keep it like it is?
Cut to y'all.
I'd like to speak on that for just, I do recognize we've got a really good man up there in front of all of us, and that's an awesome, awesome thing. In the past, the good Lord has allowed me to be at a whole bunch of different school boards because of my occupation. And I've seen a lot of different school board presidents over the years, and I've seen some good ones, and I believe we have a good one. But as a football coach, before I named my head quarterback, I like to know who's interested. So when I look around this room, I see some good people, but I see a man sitting right over there that I wouldn't mind seeing if he's interested. Mr. Glass, would you even be interested?
No, Bo, but I'll tell you why I'm not interested, if you really want to know.
Well, I'm asking.
Well, I think historically, we integrated in seventy-three. There's only been three individuals to serve that looked like me. In two thousand eight, when President Obama became president, I became the president. If you look at it historically, the board has always chosen, you know, individuals that pretty much the majority of the board. So no, calculated, I never put myself in a situation to where I know the odds are against me, so I would decline.
Anybody else that would be interested? This is not a knock against Gary.
No, anybody.
I just wanted to know because sitting in that chair right there for three years in a row has got to be different than anything the rest of us did, so.
Randy, you've been the vice president for two or three years, you want to serve?
I'm finally where I'm at.
You okay?
I'm finally for everybody on the real.
Melinda?
I'm good with Gary.
I'll make a motion that Gary be the president.
I'll second it.
Say aye?
Aye.
Randy, you want to be the vice?
Well, I'll make a motion that it stands as is.
I'll second it.
All right, everybody in favor?
Aye.
All right. Gear, I think on an executive committee, Mr. King is gone. I don't know if, I don't thi, I think Ms. Judith Ann just participated.
No, it was me, Randy, and Mr. King.
Okay, so somebody's got to be on the executive committee.
Yeah, one more.
Yeah, so.
I think Johnny would be a good one for the executive committee.
Yep.
Can you, can you, can you tell Ms. Johnny what, what was involved in that?
Well, I got off, so Randy, you can, you can tell.
Primarily looking at the checks and receipts, you know, each, each, each month, and then going over the budget, and that's basically all of it.
But you only got thirty minutes to do that.
We got thirty minutes to listen to do all that right away.
So you can't pull it at six oh two?
So, so what I'm doing is just telling you the truth, because they're not going to tell you all the truth. They're going to tell you all the truth.
I got you.
Yeah.
I got you.
But if she's a bank, I think it would be.
So is Maria, though.
No, I'm not on the.
Well, you're on the policy committee with me. Well, it can be more than.
We got other committees, too, I guess, they're all in your.
Yeah, if you share a common business, that's what the old committees were.
Well, I see Mr. King was in a lot of them. No, I don't want to, I don't want to take every bit of his spot.
I was in three.
Well, I can get off the executive committee and let one other banker get off, that's fine with me.
Gary, you've been the president, you was on executive committee?
I was. So let's put, if I'm not supposed to, let's put one of them.
Boy, you want to be on executive committee?
I'd love to be on the executive.
Melinda?
I'll be here all the time, too.
You got to come early when you're on that.
I agree.
Yeah, they start at five-thirty, but they usually.
I usually get it a little after five.
I would serve there if everybody would have.
I'm far.
Well, you know, Gary, the meeting was moved up because of you, so we need.
I know, but now we're closing at five instead of at.
Yeah, we really need to look at thirty minutes less. But others can be up.
Okay. Okay, that's all we're doing. Okay. Well, you got the athletic committee, you got to, you got to add somebody. We don't, we don't have to do them all.
Maybe. Well, you don't have to do them all, that's about the point.
We might as well.
Well, since, since, I've got stuff to do, since John has got some training and all this other kind of stuff.
Athletic, maybe I recommend Bobby on it.
Well, I mean, that's obvious. Being a former football coach, yeah, that's, that's obvious.
And that's actually transportation, safety, and athletics.
Right. Yeah, because you're.
That's me, that's me, Maria, and you, if you take that spot.
As long as I can stop right there.
For real, you want to be on the policy?
I'm on the athletics and.
Well, I thought she said she didn't want to be on all of King's committees.
Which one is he on that she?
Well, she.
Oh, well, I'm just saying, I was just saying.
Well, I'm only, I'm only on one if I'm off the executive, so I can, I can get on one of the other ones, it doesn't matter.
So I'm basically taking your place, Gary, on that?
On, on the executive, yes, on the executive committee, yes. So.
And I'm taking Ms. Keith's place on.
Transportation.
Taking James, taking Mr. King's place. Are you a relation to the executive? You're right, I am, we got to have another one, because.
I'm executive.
Okay. Well, I can take one of, one of James Kings on, whichever one y'all want me on, on the last.
Building and ground.
I think that's awesome for Gary.
Yeah, building and ground. All right, well, I'll just put myself there.
Well, I would like to have somebody on the policy committee as familiar with policy, because this is just Melinda and I, and policy is very, it's the most important committee other than executive committee, which is why I've always served on it. So somebody who can understand policy, need to consider that committee.
Who would that lead?
Well, I mean, I'm going to let them make that decision.
I wouldn't mind being on.
And who's got the next most experience?
Because it's, it's a lot involved.
Randy could be on, he's, he's pretty mild of one.
No, I think Randy would be good. I think Randy did awesome with all the construction following, keeping up with that.
That pretty much takes up care of it. To look for me, I'm, I'm ready there.
But Randy or Mr. King?
Yeah, she probably can take that. All right, let's move on. Is everybody okay with that? All right, item I, item I is LSU Ag Center four H update, Mr. Jim McCann and Ms. Jenna Bennett.
So two things tonight, Jenna's going to go first, but I appreciate y'all having us here tonight and with the new board and everything, congratulations. Jenna's going to talk a little bit about four H and what's going on in four H. We've got a short, very short video that we're very proud of, one of our four acres, she's going to talk to you about, and then I'm going to come back with some office business that we need to look at, so.
So everyone should have one of the review of the events, and it's got some pictures of our four acres and clover buds. Most of those are third grade, and I think that was fourth and fifth grade is what the pictures are on the bottom. This year, our enrollment, right now, we have two hundred and eleven members, that's fourth grade through twelfth grade. We do have clover buds at Columbia Elementary and at Union Central Elementary, and I'm working with, also trying to get one at Grayson Elementary to do that. And we usually do clover buds for third grade. Then I've got our entries there for October, November, and December, just our participation numbers. Our club meeting focus that we're doing is communication and teamwork, that's what fourth through twelfth grade is doing. And our clover buds focus is Lego engineering, so I'm reading a literacy book to them, it's got some kind of engineering. Maybe like the last one was Three Little Pigs, and it was talking about how they built their houses. And the kids had to do that with the Legos, and so that's some of the pictures that you see there at the bottom. On the back is pictures of our camp. If you have seen our camp pictures before, then you know that these, this is low numbers for camp. But our numbers were low this past year because of COVID and trying to get back into camp, and we also had damage at camp, and we're not able to use all the facilities. This year, we're supposed to be back full force, and we're supposed to have a cabin of fifty-two girls and at least twenty-six boys that we'll be able to take this year. Our shooting sports, when I was preparing this, our shooting sports numbers went from twenty-nine to forty-one this year, so it increases each year for that. And we have five certified instructors in archery rifle and shotgun. And then our junior leaders, we've got twenty-five, and from last year, we went up five, so we're rebuilding that. Our junior leader program, and that's seventh to twelfth grade. And the three young ladies on the right that you see, they are regional leaderboard members. So we have three from our parish that are represented on the regional leaderboard. And we had, have one young lady who has been working the past two days, Ag Alley. Jim and I both have been to an Ag Alley for the past two days, and working Ag Expo wheel wheel this weekend. And one young lady's been working the past two days, we have another one that'll be working Saturday. And then the bottom one, we did some painting at the Early Childhood Center in Kelly, we helped our FCS agents with that. And then Jim mentioned the video that you're going to be watching, this is going to be one of our, she was fourth grade when she did this video. And this was something that says statewide, each parish could nominate someone, and Paisley was chosen, Paisley Dunn. And I'll just let you watch and let you hear her story.
Hold on. Right here, right here, right here.
Because it offers many things. It has helped me because I don't play any sports or compete in many school activities, so four H has given me a place to belong. I enjoy the contests and how it has one thing for everybody, even if you only do one contest a year. There's just that one contest just for you.
What contest is your favorite?
Um, I've got two, the fishing, because that gives me and my daddy something to do, and my pep ball. And then the cooking, because that gives me my mammy and my mama something to do.
So something for you now that's just for you, but you and your family to do as a, as a family, right?
Like my mama teaches me cool baking tricks, but then my daddy shows me how to cast line, how to, where to throw it, how to tell if there's fish in the area. It's given me a place that I feel like I enjoy it and that I can enjoy every contest. Because nowhere else I can find a cooking contest or something that I can join in at this age, so four H has given me that. The top benefit is that there's that one contest in four H that you love and you look forward to doing it every year. And that even if you don't win, you still get a ribbon to look back and say, hey, I got something.
And Paisley did win the fishing clinic a couple of years, so I guess she's paying attention to her dad. So this won't take very long. This is, what I'm handing you is a memorandum of understanding that the school board does with the LSU Ag Center office. It's been five years, probably six years since I've done this, because COVID, they pretty much laid off for a year or so. Because, you know, everything wasn't going normal, so. So every, the police jury of the school board supports our office twenty percent salary. So, every, the police jury of the school board supports our office twenty percent salary support. School board does ten percent, police jury does ten percent. So, and that's, that's it, my office has five people in it, and we have another one comes in. We have people coming in and out of our office, you know, a lot through the month too. So, um, in the past, the number that y'all have been given, um, is seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Y'all give that a year, and I know some of the new members are probably don't know this, or, um, or need to be aware of this. Um, as in the five or six years, but since we've done this though, I, I, we have got raises or, you know, a raise or two, uh, in my office. So, that number has risen, and, um, so, that number is the first number is seventeen thousand eight sixty-seven. Um, it goes up twenty-six ninety-six according to our new salaries, so it's about twenty thousand three or four hundred dollars, somewhere in that area. I'm not telling you to go to that, I'm just telling you that's what ten percent is, so, um. Most present it this way, so that's how I'm presenting it, and it's a five-year MOU. Um, and I think like, um, as long as, um, I know the last MOU, I hadn't read everything word for word, but, you know, it's as if funds are available, so if something happens, you know, and you can't, then, then you can't. So, um, but that is the new number, um, and I could, I would pin that down, it's twenty thousand three or four hundred something dollars. Uh, and that's a year for five years. And it would start, um, I think you've already paid the one year to like December twenty twenty-three, and I would have to look back to see when it would start, but we could start, you know, whenever y'all wanted to start, if that's what y'all wanted to do.
Nikki, you, you wasn't the superintendent back then, but Jim, you, if you recall, we had already discussed about giving an increase. Anyway, we, we were never able to get to that increase because of COVID.
Because of COVID.
Yeah, it's money well spent, it's an investment to those kids. Uh, David, if you need to look at it and come up with a figure that's, you know, uh, doable, it's, it's a no-brainer, it's, it shouldn't even be a discussion, so. Uh, if there is no discussion, I would just like to make a unanimous, uh, resolution that we, uh, end into the memorandum of understanding, uh, with the, uh, Ag Center. Jim, let me ask you this, are you guys, uh, still having issues with your recruitment?
We are, uh, we're down, we're down a little bit in 4H, um, and because they, no camp for two years, no 4H University for two years. We was held very close of not doing much, just kind of staying above water. Jenna works at every school, uh, Christian Mellon's in my office, she's a nutrition educator, she works with adults and young. And, uh, we, we're trying everything we can to get these kids, camp is where it's at. Um, uh, camp, short course, shooting sports, that's our three, some of our three main, uh, things that we do, and the fishing. I mean, the fishing thing she mentioned on the video, this just keeps, puts kids in the community, but that 4H camp, people remember that the rest of their lives. And they canceled it for two years, and that hurt our program, so we're trying to get back up.
Jim, uh, Gary's center is not on the agenda now?
To approve it tonight.
Right, right, and that, and that's okay, I just wanted.
Probably need time for him to look it over.
I wanted y'all to be aware of, it's, it's up, and some of y'all was not here.
So, next month, we'll have it on the agenda.
Yeah, when's the last time that that number increased?
It's been years.
Um, we've been doing that for a long time, for six years now, and, and, and we've been in this memorandum since oh-seven. So, and I don't, I don't, I'll be honest with you. Um, when COVID hit, I was supposed to come, but when COVID hit, you know, here we are two years later, and we still had COVID problems, so it just came time to come.
Well, 4H is still the best deal.
Yeah, I agree.
Twenty thousand dollars a year, that's a steal for us.
Would you put that on the agenda for?
Yeah, Jim, can you guys come up with, uh, I don't know, with factor, with some type of recruitment plan, because as, as many kids that we can impact, you know, it would be good to kind of get those, so if, if there's something we need to do, maybe, I don't know about, uh, you know, marketing.
Well, and normally, most of the schools allow me to go in and talk to all the fourth graders. And the cloverbuds program, that's hitting third grade, and so they, they're already familiar with me, they're familiar with the program. And so that's one thing that we have tried to do with the, the cloverbuds, um, you know, to recruit more kids.
Are there any barriers that would prevent a kid from, uh, participating, and if so?
This year, one thing was, um, we had to increase our enrollment fee.
What, what are the fees?
Um, we had to go up to seven dollars, they've been five dollars for several years, and we've had to go up to seven dollars because of state fees.
So, fees become better?
Yes, ma'am, they're seven dollars.
Do you think that's limited in the picture that would enroll, just that seven dollar fee?
It, it is for some, because they see seven dollars, as, you know, that's a lot.
Well, I think that's something we need to look into too, then, I think, you know, you're talking about two hundred and eleven students, basically, at seven dollars? I think that's something we need to look into too, it's a possibility of paying their fee.
Yeah, see, Jim and I had talked about something like this three or four years ago. Uh, as a matter of fact, on the last memorandum of understanding, because that was one of my issues with the recruiting aspect, what could we do to increase that? And I think at one, maybe the year later, you were able to increase it somehow.
Right, and, and, and a couple of schools over the years have, have paid the dues of some kids. Um, I don't know if y'all remember Ms. Patricia Russell, um, she, she let them pay by the month, which is not a good thing to get into, but she wanted those kids. I mean, if they gave her fifty cents, she took it, wrote it down. So, I mean, but, I mean, that's, um, but that's, like I said, eighteen, nineteen.
You might be something worried about the money, though, just come on, just come on.
Right, and that, and that's pretty much what we've told them, if you want to come, come, we'll figure it out, you know, but a lot of kids, um, have a really hard time, when you tell them seven dollars or eight dollars, they got to get that from home. If mom and daddy don't give it to them, they're not going to get it.
Right.
Do we have a teacher at each school?
We have a 4H leader at each school, yes, and, 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 uh, and, and they help most of the time with that recruiting. Um, and we've had to go back into schools mid-year and try to get kids to come, because our numbers are low, but we know they're, it's not just us. It's low statewide, so, I mean, we don't, we feel bad, but we're not devastated because it's that way everywhere.
Well, Nikki, the reason why I ask is because, I, I think I told you, we had the kid that, uh, was a, just a problem child. The only thing that we were able to get him, not even the education could get him, he wanted to ride a bull. So, we, we put him on a bull, and, and this kid, because that's where he got his anger, frustration and all that stuff out, and, and he's excellent, and he, he's tough, he was a fighter, that's right here in Colorado, parent. So, as a result of putting him on a bull, getting him involved with, with something that he wanted. If, if you look at it, some kids don't have the opportunity to get that seven dollars, because seven dollars to them is complicated. So, if, if there's a legitimate way that we could do it with, and David, if it doesn't harm the school system, I think as many kids that we can reach to give them the opportunity to maybe walk across the stage, that's why we're here serving.
Right.
So, uh, I think if you can get with David, Nikki, uh, whoever, to try to work out some, Randy, I think that's an excellent idea, uh, to do that, or at least to consider doing that, because it's going to give some kid a chance that otherwise would not have a chance, and if some people get out of their comfort zone and go into these environments, you'll be able to see that seven dollars is an impediment for this kid. So, the comfort zone is the issue, get out of that, and you'll see what the problems are, right here, seven dollars is going to be a, a real benefit to some of the kids.
Thank y'all.
We went to the program last year, it was very impressive. The green and white ribbons, I mean, those kids have worked harder.
All right, item J is approved with one-time stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars in twenty twenty-three for maintenance personnel, George Duncan, Doll Martinez and Michael Pear.
That's yearly, right, Nikki?
That is yearly.
I saw it.
I see. Everybody in favor? All right, so, item K is financial improvement.
Okay, we got five papers in there. Same five that we always talk about. The easy funds talked about ourselves, tax, lunch and maintenance, they're all playing along pretty good. Uh, general fund is the only one that always gives me a lot of stress. Uh, I, I probably need to wake up at three o'clock in the morning thinking about something, I'm, I'm related to general fund, and, you know, it's no going to battle. Um, on the third paragraph, I, I, in bold, I put, the state needs to, uh, review the MFP allocations. It really has got to be that, because we're looking at five hundred thousand dollars deficits from here on out, as long as the insurance rates don't change, as long as our, uh, student counts stay where they are, uh, in a week. And five hundred thousand dollars, that, that equates to sixty-eight kids.
Right.
If we had sixty-eight more kids, or had we not lost sixty-eight kids over the years, now we'd, we'd be, you know, fairly okay. And if we didn't have the insurance, property insurance adjustment that really hammered us the last two or three years, I mean, we'd be great.
Is that how many kids we're down? It, it hurts every time a kid's dropped, yeah, to go from a relay to homeschool or some other school that.
Well, overall, the state is going down, and student count.
And, and when, and since COVID, and then you add in that virtual learning aspect, they have really pushed virtual school or, or homeschooling that way, and it just kind of, once everybody left, we didn't get everybody back, I mean, they were just, it was a disappear.
But it goes back to that MFP allocation, because I, I assume the state has, you know, say, a pool of money. And since they have less students to pay for, there should be a pool nest egg left over. So.
So, Nikki, if they're virtual, we, we still lose it?
There, and so we don't have a virtual, um, we have limited virtuals for our students, um, occasionally. But what I'm talking about is like, there's a Louisiana Virtual Academy.
Okay.
And it's a public school, but it's all online, and it's not through us, and so, I mean, you know how many kids we're losing. Because you, you can, yeah, I mean, there are, are kids that, and so our MFP money are go, is going with those kids to pay for those, um.
So, we have some in the parish that do that, isn't it?
At my school, we were about fifty down before COVID. Yeah, we were at like three eighty, three eighty-five, and right now, we're at three thirty-five.
See, that's, that's going to continue to be a problem, and that problem is going to start affecting the general fund, and before you know it, there's going to be some red flags.
I mean, we got, right at seven million dollars, that's not many years.
Right.
Uh, and plus, we need that balance in order to cash flow, uh, our grants on the front end, and then we can reverse it in the back end. So, I mean, obviously, we never want to be at zero, even in, in a perfect, you know, where we're going to be giving the exact, um, spending the exact amount of revenue, uh, you know, in a perfect world, we need to have that balance.
It's a cushion.
A cushion.
But it could fall drastically, right?
Hey, everything's your question, I mean, and I've talked to Nikki about it, uh, in the last day or two, that, you know, we maybe need to talk with our legislators to light, light fire.
And it is a topic at our, at my superintendent meetings that I go to every month, is, everybody's in the same bind, especially with the rising cost of insurance. Um, so, um, it's on the radar, and I told him I plan to bring it up again next week when I go.
People wild on that.
Um, I can, I can absolutely offer that up, it's going to take some push with legislators to, to, um, adjust that in that campaign.
Man, they'll, they'll go with.
Is that a topic at LSU, Jim?
Uh, haven't seen that final agenda, so. And we're healthy in comparison to other schools. So, you know, big picture wise, you know, if anybody goes down the same rate, we'll be, towards the end, we'll be impacted versus other schools, it'll be screaming, wait for it.
Which again, Nikki, is why, I said, you know, we got Representative Riser right here, I think we need to utilize that, uh, relationship, invite him here, uh, and do whatever we need to do, and let them be aware of what's going on, because, uh, you know, those people, everybody on whatever side down, they're just lying, until you get them, you know, face to face, and, you know, let them know exactly what it is, because three or four years down the road, that's going to be a problem, because every year, it has declined. And if it continues to decline, that seven million that you got, it's going to end up being a negative something, and then we're going to really be having a problem, hopefully for four years, I'll be gone. But I wouldn't want that problem to be on somebody else, because I'm not that selfish, so what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm forward-thinking. We don't need to wait until next year or next month, we need to get the Representative Riser, uh, I'll have my, uh, buddy Representative Fisher down here Monday, he and I'll be together. If we need to get all of them together, uh, that's what we need to do, because they need to hear what we're saying. And, uh, as a matter of fact, I think they need to act on what we're saying, because that's going to cause a problem, and if we can't educate a kid, then this society is already, you know, busting hell wide open, it's only going to be worse, and, and I use those metaphors to be comical, but in reality, that's what we're looking at. And, uh, I'm seeing more and more kids, like I said, just not, um, I mean, it's, it's just not, something is not working, and it's not our fault, it's just something prevented from working. And I just think we need to utilize, uh, Neil, and I, I believe we need to meet, uh, ASAP.
It's not just Neil, it's all the legislators.
Right. Well, but, but he represents us, so I'm using him, yes. But I agree, Randy, uh, if we can get all of them, yes, sir. I know we can get, uh, Katrina, uh, and Adrian, because they're a personal friend of mine, so I know we can get them along with, uh, Neil. Uh, I can get, uh, uh, my guy from, uh, Chris, Chris, uh, she's from Junior Parish, uh, he'd be glad to come, because he like to talk. But he's going to have to listen as well, so, I mean, if we need to get that going, uh, I'm, I'm willing to do it.
But it is, it is interesting, the scenario you put up, that, you know, if there's a certain, if there's a certain amount of money sitting in, in that MFP account, and the student count, and the student count is down statewide, then why aren't we getting a little bit more each student, if that, if that amount of money is sitting there?
We've raised that question.
Yeah, and Nikki had seen the same presentation, I've seen it different places, that, um, the legislature is supposed to be able, or is able to give a three, twenty percent raise every year, since nineteen ninety-one or two, it's around here, give it one time. And had they honored the three percent every year, I mean, we've been, we've earned them right.
Can they use that money for your other money?
I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know.
If they can, they probably do.
They had a question, man, they get up there at that meeting, I went to the other day. You know, talk, uh, get involved, get your legislators involved, all your, um, you know, sheriffs, your, um, anybody in the community that, you know, has anything to do with being, um, helped out.
All right, anybody got anything else, that's all you got?
That's it.
All right, we're going to go to the, uh, the memorandum, uh, revise the future progression plan, the lines that, with Act fifteen sixty-six.
Yeah, now it's under.
Now it's for.
Okay, so I'm going to start with some not so good news, and I'll end with a positive, I don't know. So, um, Bessie Bulletin fifteen sixty-six, which I did put, um, a copy in your folder. Um, beginning, um, this school year and continuing through the summer, following the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, any student enrolled in third and fourth grade, scoring below grade level on the end-of-year, uh, literacy assessment, which ours approved as the Academy Screener, shall receive a minimum of thirty hours of explicit literacy instruction, inclusive of targeted interventions during the summer, as set forth in the bulletin. The literacy instruction shall be based on the science of reading, so it requires someone to be trained in the science of reading and highly effective or proficient, uh, on, as a teacher. Uh, students who, uh, do not participate in this summer literacy intervention can be, will be retained.
Well, what?
Uh, in the grade level during the subsequent school year, unless they score basic on the LEAK, then they'll be removed.
Yeah, can I, I've got one question.
You can ask questions.
I got a couple of questions.
Sure, I don't know how to answer them.
Not participating, all right, it says, and literacy interventions may be retained in the grade level during the subsequent school year. Now, may be retained and absolutely will be retained are two different things.
Yes, and your school building level committees, we meet at the end of the year to determine those. Retentions.
And they can wait?
They can wait and see if they pass.
For taking attempts.
But if they did not attend the summer literacy interventions, then they're in trouble, it says, if I interpret this right, and John, you may, yeah. If you attend the literacy, then if you don't pass the LEAK test, you can still go on because you did the remediation.
But it requires, from what I understand too, it requires a detailed literacy plan to follow that student.
I've attended a lot of school board meetings, and they've gone over this, and they have seemingly left that part out, they, I'm not hearing discussion of that, so.
We wanted you to know, because this is a, a big deal.
Well, and we're going to begin communicating this, the parents lead, um, have started, um, middle of the year testing. Uh, it started this week, and, um, so we will have scores in February, so our elementary schools. And so we will have scores in February, so our elementary schools have a plan to address, just to kind of project who, get parents aware that this could be a possibility, and what we're doing to help their child get to grade level. And do that communication in February. So we have a plan together for how we're gonna address that, start communicating that with parents, so that they're not hearing this for the first time at end-of-years school building meetings.
So Kim, give me a scenario, and walk me through this, because I'm simple-minded when it comes to this, because I will, what I'm hearing, I dislike. So explain to me, if we have a kid that's, let's say, ninth, tenth grade, they take.
No, this is just third grade.
Well, they take the test. Okay, they failed. They're required to go to summer school, right?
Third grade.
This is not a Passor Phil screener. It is a, you're either on level, on grade level, or you're below, or significantly below.
That's, that's.
But it is a detailed literacy screener. We give it at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year.
So there's no level, you're just either or, you're not?
There's a level. There is well-above grade level, above grade level, on grade level, which is benchmark, is what you're talking about. Where you're supposed to be on your reading ability in order to be successful in the next grade level.
So if I'm a parent, and my kid starts out at below level.
You know it.
Then my excuse is gonna be, when they take the test, if they're not there, or they failed, is that the teacher didn't do his or her job.
So our response to that, your parents are already gonna know that their child is in intervention already. So we're already providing very, just individualized interventions for these kids.
This is what Maria's job is.
This is part of Maria's.
Right, so what shows me in progress of my child from the beginning of this date until they get to that point? Because if I don't see progress, then it's.
We send home reports. There's a report.
What I'm saying, what communicates, what, right, what conversation are you having?
We're taking it right now. We take the test right now, we're taking it mid-year, and then the reports go home to every parent, because we test every kid.
So if a child is not at level, are you guys actually meeting with this parent to try to come up with something to try to push, you know, closer to where they need to be?
We met with them at parent-teacher conference and presented. This was in some of the information, and if they didn't, then the phone call was made. But we have, every four weeks, we have multi-tiered system of support meetings, and we discuss each child and their progress. And I can tell you that every child that we've met on has made progress, according, you know, it may not be. So your progress, your growth, your target, if you're in second grade, you may be receiving interventions on first grade, because you can't handle certain second-grade level work right now. But you've made leaps and better growth in first grade, to, on first grade interventions, to get you to. Because we're trying to fill in those gaps still.
I'm not, I don't know that I, I'm calling, I'm just going by what my mind may have retained. If I'm right, somewhere fifty-seven percent of our kids are reading on grade level in the third or fourth grade this year?
Um, I don't have a percentage for this year.
I thought we had a percent.
After, after the middle of the year, she will come and present that to us, to show us where they're from.
But isn't that where we were at? Because we increased from such and such to such and such, we increased a lot, I understand.
We met our goal.
So, yeah.
It was like fifty-six. That goal was fifty-something, it was, it was fifty-six percent.
Fifty-something percent. So you're looking at probably, at forty percent of our third and fourth graders are gonna be going to summer school?
No, that, that district goal was not, was including paid for five. That, so it's not, that's not a percentage.
This is only third and fourth.
We can get you a percentage for third.
Third and fourth grade students are the ones that are further behind than the other.
Right. So I just reached out to Dr. Brumman, and I think before we get worked up, it may not be quite as bad as we thought. There may be other options.
Okay.
He has indicated that at the end of the year, if the kid is not on grade level, that you have to have a meeting with the parent, and come up with a plan. And the plan, and the plan may be regent, and it may be something else. And he's gonna send us some guidance, and send me a guidance document that I'll put in there.
That was my next question, that was my next question, because at the very bottom of this, that's what it reads. It reads, prior to retaining the student.
Yeah, which we do that every year, regardless. Yeah, we do that every year anyway.
So do we retest?
Yes, we test, we're testing now, for mid-year, and then we test at the end of the year. So we're testing now, so what we'll do.
So you're testing now, we'll have some training, when?
Not training, we'll have interventions.
Intervention, okay, so you have intervention, when?
Every day.
Okay.
It's been happening since August.
So what's the summer, what's the summer, let's go back to.
Summer is summer camp, accelerated summer camp.
And we're gonna automatically move them forward if they attend?
Uh, if they attend thirty hours, and it'll be.
Do we test before we move them forward?
That's what I understand.
Okay. So a kid could actually go through your intervention, go through the summer, and then do really well, and move forward?
Yes, yes.
And that's our goal.
Or not do well anymore.
Or not do well, and still go forward.
Right?
Yeah.
As long as they don't prepare you out.
This is a fifth-grade teacher's problem.
Yeah. But what I, from what I understand. What I have to understand is, is every kid that we have an intervention right now is moving forward.
Making progress.
I haven't seen not one kid go behind, and we've looked at every kid in this parish in the last two.
Yeah, well, Kim, me personally, I'm not badging you, I just wanna make sure that I get an understanding, because, well, because I don't want.
Because I don't understand it all the time, we just got this.
To be like it was when somebody else was there, all these courses, because that's our job to ask. So to make sure that we can answer those courses to those people. What I'll do is, I'll just get with you one day, you know, in the coming weeks, to kind of get a better understanding.
We have a district literacy team on this field, what is that? Are you kind of, I think you're on that, you're on that?
Yeah, but I've got to leave that. I have got an invite in the, since school started.
I don't do that, but she will do that.
Just send it to me, yes. Okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think you guys are doing a good job.
Maria will have, she will have fresh day, I mean, really fresh day.
But see, I don't trust Brumman and all these other people, because they say one day, and a day, and tomorrow, so I'm totally different. And that's, that's my issue with, you know, all these people that's supposed to be making all these policies.
I haven't experienced that at all. None of us have, right?
So Maria's working on this area.
I don't mind that, we all are, yes. Your interventionists in your elementary schools are amazing. And the new MTSS program, and we're working with the Valley Group, and it's even at sixth grade, at the junior high, we tested there. When was that, Tuesday? We tested there Tuesday, and we saw so much growth in sixth graders in their reading. Oh, yes, it's so rewarding to be able to test, you know, it's very time-consuming, but we're seeing so much growth with what we're doing.
You know, Rebecca told us at one, at that last retreat we had, that you lost so much time, like an eighth grader was like at a fifth grade level. How is that looking now? Have they tested that to kind of figure out that that fifth grade level's moved up to maybe at least seventh grade or something?
I haven't seen any studies on that.
You're in the last one.
Yeah.
The last one, yeah.
But is anything recent? I'm just, I'm wondering if they'll use this year's data, since we have two solid years under us, that they may.
And I believe that's the background of this addendum, is that we have all these kids who are behind, and we're going to require, you know, if you're not by the end of the year, you need that extra to move on, because if you don't, if you don't get on level, you're not going to, and so.
So, yeah, they put this out there in our call, and it's due January thirty-first. So, you know, I had to, I have to get a signature.
Yeah. I know we don't all understand it, but this has been passed by Bessie, so we have to. People's progression plan, we need an election to approve it. Anybody? You know, shake a finger. I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Not really? I would love to, but.
Only because we have to.
Mr. Rents? Mr. Barton?
We gotta pass it, that's bottom line.
But we don't have.
Me and Randy vote no, the rest of y'all gotta vote.
We don't have a definitive plan for following these guidelines, what Cobble Parish is going to do.
It just has to be, and all we have to do is, it has to be in our people progression plan.
She has to have it in my.
It just has to be in the plan that we're gonna follow the law.
Because we're gonna get you in trouble if we don't do this right.
But Kim, first, appreciate what you're doing.
Then he'll send all the details later, basically what they're saying.
Yeah, and like he said, he'll send us what to do, if this and that, and it's not gonna come until, you know, it's time to do it.
And our goal will be to try to get all of the kids who are below to come to. And that's one of the beautiful things, we're gonna do it with summer camp. So they're gonna have, their schedules just look a little different, they'll have more reading, but they're still gonna have the art and the music, and we're still gonna sell it, because we want kids not to feel punished, but to feel, you know, excited about coming to camp. But while you're camp, we're gonna do some literacy.
We're still gonna have the spirit of summer camp.
I got one other question. Secondary education, so this just blows my mind, third and fourth grade. Why is, I mean, we, one of the biggest problems we have is secondary education teachers, is we get the kids to the ninth, the tenth grade, and we go, why in the heck don't they notice? That's, and it's like, secondary talking about elementary, well, why is it just the third and fourth grade doing this?
Ask Dr. Brumman if that's, that's the state's.
Why are they the only ones?
That's, these kids would have been like, you're in first grade. That's the, that's the kind of thing that makes it, so they were the ones that did it.
Kaylee.
Yes.
Because I understand the process, Kaylee, I'm reluctant to go, yes. But I want to, this would be no.
I told you what that is.
Very good news.
Yes.
I, yeah. The good news is, your principals and your teachers are doing an amazing job. And, look, they are working their tails off. And we have our reading committee, and that's another I'm not gonna get into, but they're doing a great job. And I have some, some wonderful people, and I ride on cloud nine every day going into their buildings, so go visit them.
All right, thank you. Kim? All right, I'm Al, as district leaders update.
Michael, you wanna start?
Sure.
Please be, please be short.
Short. Two things, since we last met over the break, we had some equipment failure, but that's been rectified. Everything's back up and running, got it running over the break. And then we just had twenty new BNC boards installed shortly after the break. So those twenty are installed, and we're getting ready to train those teachers and move forward from there.
Thank you.
I did warn them to be brief.
Do all the schools have these now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I thought we did.
In almost every classroom.
Okay.
Sandra?
Okay. Our program financially is doing really well. I know David Kunn, who's talking about general fund not doing so well, so it's good that ours is, because we, of course, we make our money off of kids that eat. And our fund pays the salaries, pays the food, pays all of our bills. But when we're doing good, we don't have to pull from general fund. And so, something that Ms. McCann has me doing now with our monthly principal meetings, is presenting to them their percentages of how many kids are eating breakfast and lunch. And so they can see if they're, and they're all eating free, so, you know, we're trying to get these numbers up. Because again, it helps us financially. And as a district, I can tell you, our goal is eighty percent for lunch, and we have seventy-eight percent now. And breakfast is sixty percent, and we're at fifty-eight. So we're, we're getting there, but I think, you know, by the principals and school leaders seeing, and some of them are kind of competitive, because we have these numbers out there every month for them to see where they are individually. And so hopefully, that's gonna help them encourage all their students to go in the cafeteria and eat, and that will, you know, continue to help us financially, and I don't have to go to David for money.
Mine is short and sweet.
Thanks.
But everything going on right now, we're gearing up for testing. Both the CTE kids, teachers getting ready to certify their kids, and the district-wide, we're getting ready, full tests from February to May.
Ms. Wells, you fit right in with the new job that you got. I don't know about Jane. No, I'm just joking.
Okay, mine is short, sweet, two new buses that y'all approved to buy, they're on the road. And Ms. McCann, she'll.
I do have some pictures, I'll pop them.
If she wants to show me, she can show me. Also, the.
There they are.
Oh, nice.
That's nice.
Air conditioning.
I make sure to take pictures of the air conditioners up front.
And I send these to Miss Judith, so you know.
Oh, I saw her picture in the back, well.
And then the only other thing is, you know, that cold snap during the Christmas holidays caused a few headaches with some burst water pipes, but, you know, we got that fixed, and I will not let that bite me like that again.
I had a call on Christmas Eve, didn't I?
Yeah, I got a call from you on Christmas Eve.
We tanked the Callwell on Christmas Eve.
What job did Christmas?
That was called, I had to call somebody.
We were over here turning off water.
Thank you. Kim, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, Monica?
Okay, I have a lot on my plate. We've been through birth three and LA four monitor, we haven't got that back yet, but should be good on those. We had our Waterford Science of Reading in-person training with our pre-K three and four teachers on Monday. They'll have another session this coming Monday. It was the first live training they presented in the nation, Waterford, so they were really excited. They actually had someone from Waterford here fill in it, so they're gonna use it in their promotions, so we were excited about that. Lena, they're beginning their next cycle with, that Rhonda does, managing the language in the classroom. And Kelly, which is the A D S, like the K, enough, positive, that second cycle starts this week, too, so we'll have that data for you. Conscious Discipline, we have a master instructor coming in in March and April to do two full days with pre-K three and four teachers. And each of those will be followed by parent nights, where all the parents in the district will be invited to come and hear her. And then at both pre-K three and pre-K four, we have started pulling kids for intervention. And we've made a point that we're not pulling IED kids. We're trying to pull those kids who are just falling short, they're not getting it, but they don't qualify for something, so they're middle-of-the-road kids. They're being pulled once a day for intervention out to get a little extra literacy training. So.
Ask one?
Couldn't Nick be short?
Mine next, or is it, I think John got this next. By the way, mine will be short, as short as he is long.
You ready?
I'll give you thirty minutes.
That's what I was gonna ask, how long do you want me to do?
Thirty minutes, it's your turn.
You be the official guest.
No, I don't.
All right. We need five hours of this in LaSalle today, so anyway. Show of hands for a freshman, I know Boz, you, how many total U boardroom should be there?
Johnny?
Your name?
Johnny? I think I saw you, Westner, or Lee, Westner?
Yes.
All right. So here's the deal, you're about, I'd say, two thousand twelve, about ten years too late, as far as having some actual authority. From, for ninety years until two thousand twelve, school boards were in total control. They made all decisions until two thousand twelve. Two thousand twelve, this thing on Act One was passed. A lot of times lawyers and educators will say, Act One, Act One, Act One, and they never show somebody what Act One is. So in the printout that you've given, this language in yellow, right off the bat, is basically Act One. And when you looked at that section eight-three, where it says, "The school boards shall delegate all authority and personnel, not only for the hiring, but the placement of employees," that's what we're talking about. All personnel decisions are now taken from the board and are vested in the superintendent. I happened to be around in two thousand twelve when that was coming in, and I happened to have been raised by superintendent. And I can tell you, they didn't want this, because they were smart enough to know that by doing this, you were pitting the school boards against the superintendents. Because the legislature and the governor was making a decision that school board members are the problem. That's why our grades aren't increasing, that's why our education is not improving, it's board members. And so they tried to nip the authority of boards, and they did quite a bit of that. So as a result of that language in yellow, you will see that your main job now is to adopt the policy. And then, once that policy is adopted, it's turned over to these good folks, then your superintendent to carry it out. And as a board, you only have one employee evaluating, that's the superintendent. And as a board, you only have one employee evaluating, that's the superintendent. She in turn, and her supervisors evaluate the others. And that's, that's generally the way that works. Let's talk about what are my authorities? So John, if you say, "I can't do personnel," what are my authorities? Your first authority is to adopt policies. Every year when the legislature meets, they pass a gob of laws that require new policies. And you have a company called Forthought that puts together those policies for you. You then read those policies and adopt them. I wanna ask you not to rubber stamp those policies anymore, to the extent that you ever did. Most of these policies are the same and ever perish. But what we're finding is that sometimes the policies don't really reflect what we actually do. And so, if, if we can't live up to what that policy says, change the policy. Number two, they may not reflect the values and things you believe in. And so if that's the case, change the policy. But don't just adopt it because it's sent to you. Uh, I know Nikki and her staff looked through it and looked from a perspective of, is this something we can do? And, but you as well should look at it and say, look, is this what we wanna be doing? So policymaking is your first authority. The second one will be upon you sooner than you realize, and that's your budget. So, some people in this room will actually recommend a budget to you and you have to come through the budget. That budget has to be made available to the public for inspection. Uh, the budget has to be the subject of a budget hearing. That's where we, you know, we publicize the fact that we're adopting a budget. And it is through that budget that you set the tone for the district. And in the statute that is before you, that I see that these gentlemen are looking at now, it says that school boards determine the number of employees, the number of teachers, the number of... And you do that by the budget process. You know, you'll never have a budget, I knew that we employ 234 teachers. You don't do that. But what you do is you adopt a budget which sets out, you know, how much money is allocated for personnel. Uh, another common problem we have is that some school board members, they look at the budget and they say, man, we need to save money. I think we need to eliminate all out of district travel. We need to have an electricity czar to go behind us and cut off all these lines. That won't save the squad. In LaSalle, the business manager told me that 86% of her budget is personnel. Eighty-five. So that means the salaries, the benefits, the retirement, that's where the bulk of your money is. So how can you, how can you handle that? The first thing you can do is monitor your student numbers. And when those student numbers decrease, don't put a lot of pressure on these folks. Like when a teacher retires, don't go and say, well, miss, we, we had a teacher retire in our school, we need to hire someone. No, you may not. You need to look at the number of students you've got and compare it to the number of staff. And it may be that we don't need to fill that position. Because it may be that we reshuffle the teachers that we have across the district. Nobody likes hearing that. But the reality is sometimes we have to reshuffle. Sometimes the class size may need to swell a little bit. You're still blessed in this parish by having a relatively good balance.
And I think, see, and Act One could've done a better job on that by giving the check and balances, you know, to that particular issue. Because the board doesn't necessarily have to have the authority to take away from that person. But there should be some type of, what she does, the previous two have done it, communication. But they don't necessarily communicate that information to us.
Right.
So I think Act One could've done a better job.
It could, but I know your superintendent, she's gonna communicate with you.
But some may not.
Some may not, the next one may not, and that's a flaw in Act One. So let's recap. What are my, my authorities? Number one, it being in the policy. Number two, it being in the budget. Number three, it is the employment of your superintendent. You know that? You deploy a very important person, an extra superintendent. And a part of that employing the superintendent is to give her feedback. If, uh, you know, I sit through hundreds of meetings every year and I sit through superintendent evaluations and both the superintendent and the board members say, communication. If I had a dollar for every time I hear the word communication, I wouldn't have to worry about paying tuition for my daughter at school. Okay? So what I'm telling you is that if you have an issue with anybody in this room out here or with her, don't let it fester. You know, it's just like a marriage, folks. Number one, it's easier to get into than to get out of. Number two, you don't wanna go to bed at night mad at each other and you don't want something to fester with her or with your staff. If you've got a problem, set up an appointment, go visit them. Okay? Now, let me tell you how I respond to superintendents when they call me about hiring people. A lot of times superintendent calls and says, John, I really think we need a person to fill the position of X. Just, I don't know what X is, I just call it X. I go through and look at your questions. Number one, do you have a salary schedule for that position? Another one of your duties is you have to, as a board, adopt a salary schedule for that position. Okay? Superintendent says, yes, I do. Do you have a job description for that position? You as a board have to approve and revise job descriptions. That's not the superintendent, that's the board. So if you've got the salary schedule and you've got the job description, then the next question I ask is, do you have the money and the budget? And so if she has the money and the budget, the job description and the salary schedule, she can then hire. So, we start with a proposition that you're out of personnel, but you can see very quickly that that doesn't mean you've lost all your authority. We've talked about the budget, we've talked about the policy, we've talked about job descriptions, salary schedules, the budget, all that. So those are the very important things that, that you do. Now, before we leave personnel, there's, there's two things that you need to know. And section P is in Paul in that, in that deal, uh, that 1781. It says that no board member can individually try to coerce, compel or interfere with a personnel decision. We have one case that is instructive, it's now out of RAPIDS. That's where a board member went to a principal and said, I want so-and-so hired. You know, Junior Samuels, he supported me in that last election. And he, he needs a job. I don't know if you've seen old Junior lately, but he's, he really needs a job. His parents need him to have a job too. So you need to hire him. Well, unfortunately for that board member, that conversation was being recorded. And that was held to be trying to coerce, intimidate or interfere with a personnel decision.
Didn't everything record, did it?
It seems to be. I'll tell you what, man, it's got my attention too. You know, Louisiana is a, is a one-party state. That means that as long as one party to the conversation consents to recording it, then you can record it. And I had a case where I was representing a banker that left his bank and went to work with another bank and the, the old bank sued him for taking customers and allegedly taking trade secrets with him. And, uh, so he got a call from somebody over at the bank. Said, it's just called Dan. Dan, I don't blame you for leaving us, we treated you wrong. We, we could've done better on our end and I don't hold it against you. Well, it comes time for a deposition and a trial. That guy says, that's the worst thing, that guy's unscrupulous, unethical, blah, 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 blah. You know, he never should've left, he had no reason to leave. And so, we came to him, I turned to ask questions, I said, well, sir, have you always held that opinion? Absolutely. I said, you've never changed your opinion as to my client leaving? No, sir. I said, well, do you remember calling him on such, such date? No. I said, well, perhaps I could refresh your memory. Button on that tape and it said, man, they treated you like a mushroom. They fed you veneer and kept you in the dark. I don't blame you for leaving. And boy, it was bad. The problem was, we were in the state of Maryland. I was in Annapolis, Maryland when we were, were doing this. And the lawyer for the other bank jumped up and says, call the cops. You know, it's illegal in the state of Maryland to record a conversation. This deposition's over and he canceled the deposition. Well, I was packing in a hurry to get out of there before the cops came. And we get back down to Louisiana where the case was pending and the judge ruled that since my client was sitting in Louisiana when he hit that button and that even though the other person was in the state of Maryland, that it didn't apply. Now, the judge told us to go back to Maryland and finish that deposition. And the lawyer said, we're still gonna get you. So I had to call and hire a lawyer in Maryland. I hired a bail bondsman because I just knew that when I went up there, they were gonna get me. And all my little other attorneys that went with me that first time to help me, they all had a conflict with their calendar, that's no right. So, I took an Uber to the deposition, I made him ride around there two or three times as we were, before we went in. But yes, you're right, people can record you at any time. Now, this section P doesn't have a penalty. It doesn't say, anyone who violates this law shall be sent to a fine. What happens though is, if you look in the Ethics Code, that same identical language is in the Ethics Code under abuse of office. And that's where the fine comes in, under the abuse of officer of the Ethics Code. All right. Now, if you will flip over to section V is in Victory. You see, in Louisiana, when we revised the law, we just stick it at the end. And so even though P involved personnel, when they added the language found in V, instead of going back to P and amended it, amended P, they just stuck it on in B. That was the end of the law at the time, so they stuck it there. What does V say? It says, forget everything you read up in P. If all you wanna know is the status of a personnel matter, you can ask the superintendent that. So if you wanna ask the superintendent, hey, what's, what about old Bo Barton? Is he still employed with you all? She can give you that information. And so she could say, yes, Mr. Barton is still employed with us, he is still on the payroll. Well, what about John Geis? Oh, he is on administrative leave now, we've, we've got some things going on, he's on leave. Well, what about Miss so-and-so? She resigned. So she can tell you the status of a personnel matter. Now she can't get into the needed details of it, but as far as the status of it, she can tell you that. Now, another important portion that I skipped over accidentally in section K is in kite. When you're elected to this board, you have the absolute right to, to any information that this board has. If you wanna know what all your teachers make at a certain school, you can ask for it. If you wanna know, uh, you know, anything, all the records of the school board are at your disposal with the exception of personnel records. So evaluations, observations, reprimands, complaints, grievances, those are things you can't look at. And the reason, in my opinion, that that law is there is because there's only been one perfect person that ever walked this earth and he, he is above us now. And we all are susceptible to that little man that sits on our shoulder that says, I'll do it, do it. So if you go look in that personnel file, you're gonna be tempted to go home and tell your spouse, you won't believe what I saw in that personnel file today.
But the same thing could happen with the person that's imposing that.
That's right.
So I mean, it's, it's, you give them one person, the authority to do it, but there's no other way that this, the, the board, which is us elected, who is gonna catch the flak from this, there's nothing that we can do.
Well, all you can do is tell the person, the, the community, that matter anyway. I can't do anything about personnel anyway.
That may be right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Now, it does say, in all honesty, to you, if you read on into that section K, that the board can vote in a meeting to authorize Baron to go look at that file. But we have to tell the employee, hey Johnny, Baron's gonna look in your file. And it says that Baron can't tell anybody what he saw in that file. So I'm urging you not to do that. The, the law, whether it's right, wrong or indifferent, the law's the law and that's, and that's what it says.
And an employee looked in their own?
They're all bow, yeah. Under the Personnel Files Act, the employee can look in their own file at any time. And nothing bad can be in that doc, in that file unless they have actually signed it. So they, that's proof that they've seen it before it went in the file.
So they refuse to sign it.
So if, if, uh, let's say a principal writes up a teacher because they've been late every day this week and the teacher says, I'm not gonna sign that. Well, what I would do if I was the principal, I'd call in my secretary and I'd say, Miss so-and-so, I've asked John to sign this document and he has refused to sign. Isn't that true, John? You're damn right, I'm not signing. All right, so both the principal and the secretary write on there, if they sign, as a witness and put, Mr. Geis refused to sign. Then, if I'm the principal, I come back and I type up a reprimand, number two. And said, and I say, on January such and such, I presented you with a document, I directed you as your supervisor to sign that document and you refused. That's neglect of duty. And I write him another reprimand. Now, you may say, why would you do that? The reason you do that is the law and your policy both say that when presented with the original, the employee shall sign. It also says that their signature does not mean they agree with you. Their signature just means for purposes of that law, that they saw the document before it went in their file.
I signed the document after that one. I wrote up under what, the accusation, I wrote up under the accusation, I do not agree and I do not admit it this, but I am signing. Bo Barton drew a line in the...
That's what you should do. Also, at the point you did that, you have other rights that kick in. You have the right to file a response and rebuttal to that document. And once you do that, they have to staple it to the original. So wherever that bad document goes, your responsibility is. If you think that document is pure BS and it, it's just absolutely false, you also have the right to tell that principal, I wanna see the proof behind that document. And they have to present that. So our employees have a lot of rights. Those rights are not the same rights that people at Brookers enjoy. These personnel file rights that we just discussed are only applicable to school districts. So they, they are some, some good rights. So anyway, the last thing that I wanna call to your attention on this, this particular statute is section Y. This is something that we all need to be aware of and it's new. Now, look, you can go back and read this stuff at your convenience, but I'm telling you, I go to sleep when I have a presentation that someone reads to me, I just won't do that. And that's section Y. It says that we have a duty to tell all our kids how to report child abuse. And who to report it to. And we have to have the child abuse hotline on our website. This law was passed because of what happened in Bossier Parish. Uh, about three or four years ago, we had a PE teacher that actually raped five and six-year-old boys and girls at school. At school. We had like 10 or 12 of them and we had lots of issues there. And this priest was telling them, abuse, sit, tell anybody, I'll kill your mom or I'll, I'll, I'll behead your little brother. Just na, just horrible stuff like that. And these kids went for years without telling anybody. So this law has been passed and you're, you are supposed to teach these kids, starting now, using age and grade appropriate instruction on what is child abuse and how to report it. Now, a lot of your parents don't like it, they're gonna say, look, that's my job, not yours. So, here's what I have proposed. I have gone to this group called the Gingerbread House over in Shreveport. If you haven't heard about them, Google them. They are a group of child psychiatrists and pediatricians. And anytime a kid is, is a victim of such a crime, the judge and the DA will, and the police will send that child to the Gingerbread House in Shreveport and they'll interview the child and they'll examine the child. For, you know, and they, they role-play what happened and get the kids to talk. And, and as professionals, they can determine if abuse most likely apparent or not. They have agreed that they will make four videos. The first video will be one for the parents that'll say, uh, thank you for taking the time to watch this video. If you're seeing this, that means that you have a child enrolled in Caldwell Parish schools. The law now requires us to offer your child instruction and child abuse, how to report it. We've made this video to explain that to you. And we've also made three separate videos, one for kids in kid grades K through four, one for grades five through eight, one for nine to 12. And we urge you to watch the video that corresponds with your child's grade. And if you have no objection, the child can view these grades in order for the school board to meet its obligations under this law. If however, you do not agree with this, we would ask you to opt out by signing a form indicating that you don't wish the, the school to do this. And so these professionals will prepare the video and use the proper terminology, uh, the age and grade appropriate terminology, and they will get this done. Now, the only downside of this is that video's gonna cost $60,000 to prepare. It will be done in a TV studio. And so, if we can get the LSBA... And so if we can get the LSBA to help us and subsidize that, I have not got to visit with Dr. Pope yet, but I would hope that they would. If they want, Bossier is saying, "We're willing to team up with four, five, or six, or 10 other districts and share the cost of it to get it done." But regardless of how we do it and get it paid, we have two options. We can start gearing up to provide this type of instruction to our school nurses, or our PE teachers. But I think we're gonna get a little kickback to them, because they're not gonna know what to say and do. Or we can look to some other outside source, or we can look to the Gingerbread House. My role here today is just to let you know that this is important, that it's already happened in another parish, and that is now in this law.
They know you gotta pay it, so they just jack the price. It ain't worth no $60,000.
No, I believe that when you look at who is gonna be doing this, and the fact they're gonna go to a studio to do it, there're gonna be some costs involved. Now, Bossier has on-site studios. You know, they have a TV studio, they have a director of information, public information for the school board, and she is a former Channel 3 anchor. So they have something on site. So that may reduce the cost that they would offer that TV studio to the Gingerbread House. But anyway, that being the case, I just wanted you to be aware of that type of situation. And maybe our business folks can budget a little money toward meeting this obligation.
Nicky, we have a policy to how to react to that. If somebody calls me and I call you and say, "Hey, Nicky..."
It just came out, and we've been waiting for somebody to... We've been told, we're trying to find somebody who can do this, because none of us want to put our teachers or our nurses in a position that way. Yeah, so we're waiting for advice.
All right. Turn to page 10, please.
It's a shame we gotta talk about it.
Yep, it is. You cannot believe the intensity of those board meetings where we had to discuss this with each, about these particular kids and those cases. We had multiple lawsuits, and nobody wanted to litigate that. We didn't want... Once this guy pled guilty, and once you heard some of the tales that would make you sick, and you would just, your heart went out to the family. But the board only had three million in insurance debt. And if you've got 10 or 12 kids that have been raped and having psychological... That's not gonna be a drop in the bucket. So that's the situation. This was the first time I'd ever heard that it actually happened on campus in such little kids. All right, page 10, kinda giving you a chart of what's the area and whose responsibility it is. Day-to-day operations of the schools, that's the superintendent. Budget, that's your role, superintendent recommends. Decisions on buildings, either selling the building, tearing it down, renovate, selling it, blah, blah, blah. You make that decision, the administration recommends. You can read those on your own. I just wanna hit some highlights. Grievances are a big one. The law says that you have to allow your employees the right to file a grievance if they feel as though their rights have been offended or a policy has been violated. One thing that I think you should realize is, an employee can only file a grievance to the board if the board can fix the problem. So let me give you two examples. Let's say that a teacher who has a bachelor's degree goes to school over the summer and takes classes to get a master's degree. And so they go down to the State Department of Education. They say, "Here's my transcript. Here are the courses I took. I want you to upgrade my certificate to show that I've got this extra area of certification. I'm now certified, in addition to the course, I'm certified in supervision instruction." And the department says, "No, we're not gonna do it. We think you haven't taken enough courses. You should've taken this course. You should've taken course 207 instead of 206," whatever it is. The employee comes back and files a grievance with you and says, "I want you to upgrade my certificate." Or, "I want you to make the State Department upgrade my certificate." You know, you have no authority to do that. But a lot of times, we have employees that file grievances here that are the very same way. For instance, let's say that the superintendent takes an elementary school teacher at this school and moves them to teach the same grade at another school, and the employee files a grievance. "I've been teaching, you know, I've been teaching second grade at this school for 25 years. I've got all my lesson plans. That's what I wanna teach. She's moved me to the third grade over at this school. I don't know anybody over there, and I'm gonna have to do all these lesson plans. That's not fair. I don't wanna move." Well, if you look at that law, that Act 1 we just looked at, it says that the board shall delegate the authority for the hiring and the placement of teachers. So that means that the authority to place someone in a particular location in the parish or a particular grade is not with the board, it's with the superintendent. So the board couldn't have a grievance on that and overrule the superintendent because you don't have the legal authority to do that. So in order to process a grievance, it has to be something that falls within your authority. So let's say it was some other policy that was violated. Or let's say that it was a salary issue, or that falls under your salary schedule. Something that is squarely within your authority, you can address through the grievance. All right, so that's one I wanted to hit. I wanna hit suspensions and expulsions real quick. We all know, and we can just hop right to the point, when it comes to the termination of employees, that's generally left to your superintendent. But when it relates to suspension and expulsions, that's a big deal. And here's what the law is on that. If it's a one, two, three, four, five-day suspension, if the principal recommends a suspension, the parents can appeal one time. They can appeal the principal's decision to the superintendent. She will meet with them, or her designated will meet with them and will hear the case, and she will either reverse and reinstate the kid, declare their record, or she will uphold the suspension. But her decision is final. Why is that? For two or three reasons. Number one, it's just a few days. The kid will already be back at school before your next school board meeting. Another reason is, if you had to hear every suspension, can you imagine every in-school suspension, every two- or three-day suspension, every fight? If they had the right... Y'all would have to have two suspension review meetings every month.
One is enough.
Yeah, that's right. All right, so that's suspensions. Expulsions are totally different. Now, for you newbies here, when Randy and I were kids and in school, if we were expelled, it was kinda like playing Monopoly. We didn't pass a gun. We didn't get 200 bucks. We went straight home for the rest of the year. Probably got our butts worn out, and we just lost a year of education. In the kinder, gentler world that we live in today, in a world of timeouts, they say timeout is that period of time between when your parent used to hit you and you woke up. That was timeout. But in today's world, we no longer kick a kid out because the kid goes behind. And if a kid loses a year, it can be an academic death sentence. So we have to send them to the alternative school. Or if we don't have an alternative school, we have an alternative program, which may include virtual. So we retain jurisdiction of the kid. But since an expulsion is a long-term removal, it's a more serious punishment, a more serious impact on the kid, so they have more rights. What are those rights? Not only can they appeal to the superintendent, but they can appeal that to you on the board, and they can appeal to the court if they don't like your decision. So the decision of the superintendent's final on suspensions, it is not, and they can come to you and to the court on expulsion. One final thing on expulsion. You will have one kid come before you, alleged to have done something wrong. And I want you to look at that that way, though. I want you, if that kid comes to you from Caldwell High School, I want you to consider the entire student body at Caldwell to be before you. Let me give you this example. Sometimes we'll have a kid that will strike the teacher. And let's use that one as an example. A kid strikes a teacher. It's been a good kid, just had a bad day, okay? Comes before you and says, "Look, I'm a good student. I made, I've got good grades. I'm an athlete, you know, blah, blah, blah." What are you gonna do? The superintendent puts on the evidence that the kid did hit the teacher. If you put that kid back, what are you doing? You're telling every other kid over there, "It's open season on striking teachers." So yes, you'll have one kid in front of you. But just remember, in the big picture, every kid over there is looking at it. What punishment, you give this kid? Now, I'm not saying that principals never make mistakes, or the superintendent's always right. I'm just asking you to take a really close look and think of the impact of your decision before you reverse an expulsion, okay? Now, let me put your mind at ease. We have something called a temporary re-enrollment agreement. If you have a kid that's expelled, and they go to the alternative school, and they're a model citizen, they do their work, they're on time, we can ease them back to school on a contract that says they agree to return to school, to sin no more, and if they mess up anyway, they automatically go back. So that's something that can be done. But I just want you to take a close look when you have an expulsion.
Our superintendent could write that in?
Yes.
If we decided to expel, she could go, "Okay, we're gonna expel you, but we're gonna put this in. If you do this for so many weeks, we will ease you back into school. Once grew up, you're going back."
That's right. That's right.
The policy's different, though, James. You can attest that the policy we have is different. You know, they can do that, you know, under the probationary period that we have. But that's left strictly up to you guys. We don't wanna have nothing to do with that. That's the school's function, the principal's function, so the board doesn't have anything to do with it.
But when I say "we," I'm saying, please understand that the system has other means of addressing the situation. I just don't want you to do something that sends the wrong signal to all those other kids over there that they're... That's what I'm saying.
And what you're talking about is if a parent appeals.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, if a parent appeals.
Well, see, Nicky, in my 30 years, there's only been one appeal that we overturned. That was with Mr. Sartin, and the facts were there. I think Angela and Ms. Jones were the principal. But that's the only time that we've ever overturned a decision. And that's 30 years, which means that there's a lot of confidence that's there. Now, that may be disagreements, but when you look at the facts, they don't prove, you know, otherwise that it should be overturned. And that's just one. But it was obvious.
All right, I only got like two, 30 more minutes. Good. All right. Page 12 is being affected, board member.
You have talked too long anyway.
All right, thank you, man. It's tough. You don't get those packets with your agenda and the materials just for the heck of it? Read those things, and here's a couple of reasons why. Under the open meetings law, we have to have an agenda like the one that y'all had tonight. And the superintendent has to post that 24 hours in advance. If you get your package and you open it up immediately, and you look on there and you say, "Well, look, the 4H agreement's not on there. We were supposed to take the 4H." You call the superintendent and say, "Hey, the 4H agreement, the MOU's not on there. I know that's probably a mistake." She can walk out there, tear up the old agenda, and post a new one up there. And as long as we've done that more than 24 hours in advance, we're fine. So look at that agenda. The second reason you wanna look at that package early is because you might have questions. And if you wait till the meeting, then you may not get the questions answered because it may be a personnel, or it may be a business question, and the person with that knowledge may not be here. So ask the questions. And the third reason you wanna look is because of what happened in a board meeting I was in Monday night. And they talked to Darren Long during the national championship. I was ready to go. I kept saying, "No score yet." That's right. So this board member says, "We're having security cameras, and we're paying $130,000 for security cameras? This is ridiculous."
You're not Monday shit, are you?
No, no, no. This one member says, "Much further west than I..."
Well, it's just Brendan.
So anyway, the board member said, "That's too much. We should've sought B and this professional services. We shouldn't have even asked for quotes." And somebody said, "Five quotes were in your package." He hadn't even looked at his package. So, all right, dead horse, look at your package, call prior to questions. Attend all board meetings. Man, you think that's... There's a particular parish around here where a person was elected for a four-year term, and she didn't attend six meetings the whole four years. You cannot remove a fellow board member for that. That can be recalled. But now, you can pass a policy that says they won't get their salary if they miss X number of meetings, but you can't remove them.
Apparently, they can be sued because that's going on in back near the parish right now, isn't it? Somewhere down there where a board member did the 10 meetings, and the DA down there is...
The DA may be going after their...
Going after the board member.
Yeah. Please understand the proper use of executive session. I don't wanna come back because that's important. Don't seek to embarrass the staff or employees. I've never seen that at this board, but I have seen it at others. You know, that's, you know, a lot of people wanna sit back and play, "I got you," instead of calling and saying, "Look, I don't understand this," or "I don't think you did this right." Can you take a look at that? They would rather sit back, wait till the meeting, and then go, "Aha!" You know, and again, I've never seen that here, but we wanna avoid that. Avoid conflicts of interest arising by virtue of your legislative, executive, and judicial roles. What in the heck does that mean? That means that as a board member, you sometimes act as a legislature. You enact a policy. As an executive, you monitor the budget and make adjustments in the budget. And as a judicial role, you will hear grievances, and you'll hear expulsions and other things. There are certain things you can do, though, that will cause a conflict of interest. Let's say a parent college that says, "Look, Johnny is being called in. I'm afraid they're gonna take some disciplinary action against him in the Mark School. Will you come and go with me to the school?" If you do that, you are gonna have to disqualify yourself from any expulsion hearing or something like that. You are creating a conflict of interest, okay? So be careful not to blur your roles here. That's what that means. Do not promise what you can't deliver. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you're one of seven. And if you ever say, "I'll take care of it," in Catahoua Parish where I come from, you have just allowed your mouth to overload your behind, okay? You cannot deliver on that. So be careful there. Make decisions for the benefit of your grandchildren. What that does is to emphasize, you gotta make long-term decisions, okay? Long-range thinking is what you wanna do. Remember that your decision impacts all students. What that means is, you just had an election. You are elected from a ward or a district. But once you take the oath of office, as you did tonight, you're supposed to make decisions for the best interest of all your kids. So remember that. And finally, accept the will of the majority. See, if you're not gonna win every time, you may not win a bill or prevail inside the majority at times. But once the majority has made a decision, that is the decision of the board, and you support it. It's much like electing a superintendent. You may not have supported the superintendent, but once he or she is the superintendent, your job is to work together for the best interest of the district. Now, the one I skipped was executive sessions. It's important, and I skipped it, the second option. What is an executive session? Executive session is something that is so confidential or so important that we will allow you as a board to ask the audience to leave the room, and you can stay in here just amongst yourselves and discuss it. It's important that you hear me say, "discuss." You can't take any votes in executive sessions. It can't be recorded. It can't be videoed. It's just a private discussion. But since in Louisiana, we want everything to be done out in the open, we're very careful to only allow executive sessions in very restricted instances. So there's about six reasons you can do it. The first one is personnel. Now, let's say that you wanted to enter to executive session to discuss the man in blue. All right, you'd have to give him a letter that says, "This is to give you notice that we may enter to executive session at our meeting on such and such to discuss your professional competence." You have the right to require that discussion to be held in public. So it is the employee's option to say, "Hey, if you wanna talk about me, come out and do it in public." Usually, though, if you just offer the employee the opportunity to come in and to address the board on whatever the issue is, that will be satisfactory because most employees don't wanna be discussed in public anyway. So the first one is personnel. The second one is a lawsuit. Let's say we have a bus rear-end a car, and we come in here, and I tell you, "Look, this case is worth $10,000. Give me $10,000 authority, and I'll get the case settled." You don't wanna say that out in public. If you say, "The maximum this case is worth is $10,000," how much you think her attorney... how much you think her attorney's gonna worth? Ten thousand dollars. I had one in a parish one time. We went into executive session. I told them, I said, "This case is worth ten thousand dollars. I'll get it settled as cheaply as I can." They voted to give me ten thousand dollars. And the way they did it is, after the executive session, they came out and they said, "We have received the recommendation of our lawyer. Mr. President, I believe that we accept that recommendation and give him the authority to settle the case as we discuss in executive session." So I called the attorney the next day, and I said, "Look, I settled the case for five thousand. Will you take five?" He said, "No, I won't take five, but I'll take seventy-five hundred." I said, "Done deal." I called the superintendent and said, "Send me a check for seventy-five hundred." Before I could get that check, the lawyer called me back and said, "Look, we don't have a settlement. I haven't signed the documents yet." And one of your board members called my client last night at home and said, "Honey, I hope that ten thousand dollars we're paying you will take care of." Folks, what goes on in Vegas stays in Vegas, and what goes on in executive session needs to stay in the executive session, too. So personnel, lawsuits, the next one is security plans. Anything that you talk about how we're gonna handle an active shooter, that's confidential. The public doesn't need to know that. I've heard some boards say, "Well, where are we gonna send all the kids if we have a fire drill? Where are we gonna send all the kids if we have an active shooter drill?" Look, the bad person hears where you're gonna do it. They call in a fake fire drill, and they stand out there and fuck 'em off. So you go into executive session to discuss that. The next one is called allegations of misconduct. And let me tell you why that happens. Sometimes the superintendent will find out that something is awry, something's going on wrong, but they won't know who did it. Maybe it's money at Caldwell Jr. that we can't account for. And so we can't go into executive session to discuss personnel because we don't have a particular employee to identify and to send a letter to. But the superintendent doesn't want you to hear about this on the street from what I call the street committee because she doesn't want you to get shocked. It makes you look stupid if someone comes and says, "Hey, Bo, what about all that money, Miss?" What are you talking about? Superintendent had to tell you that? So the superintendent doesn't wanna be in that situation. So we can go into an executive session to discuss allegations of misconduct, and she can say, "Look, here's what's going on. I contacted our auditor. I've contacted the Sheriff's Department. We're investigating it, but I don't want you to get caught by surprise. I want you to know what's going on." So that is another one. And there's also one for natural disasters, pandemics like we just had with COVID. And the final one is parental concerns. Let's say that I'm the parent of a special needs child, and my daughter has to wear diapers. And I have an issue that I don't think her diaper's being changed often enough and it's causing a severe diaper rash. I shouldn't have to come into a crowded room and have that type of discussion with you. We can go into an executive session and discuss that. Similarly, on these expulsion hearings, we can go into an executive session and discuss that. So anyway, I've overstated my welcome, but I wanna tell you this. Teachers don't teach for the money. Board members don't serve for the money. You've obviously taken some time. You've shelled out some effort to be elected to this job. Y'all've got a good district here. I heard you begin this meeting with prayer. In a lot of parishes I represent, they cannot do that. They have court orders in place as a result of lawsuits that say that teachers can't have a Bible in the classroom. Teachers can't have a Bible in the classroom. Teachers can't have a cross in the classroom. There cannot be any prayer football games or anything like that. That unfortunately is the way things seem to be going.
So John...
This time next year, we may just have a sign that says, "Restroom." Men's room and ladies' room. But anyway.
This will be a fight.
Alright, so anyway, all I'm telling you is, we know that you do this because you wanna make a difference. If you ever need anything, we'll try to help you. I do believe that the School Board Convention would be beneficial to you. You can get all your training. You can make contacts with other people in other districts and see how they do things. Question?
Yeah, I know you're trying to avoid my question, but I'm gonna ask anyway.
You have an answer.
If a teacher's gonna have a Bible in their class, I'm saying if it can't...
I'm saying that if they have a bookshelf and the Bible is one of the books on that bookshelf, I think I can defend that and prevail. If a teacher wants to come in and have what I call a recipe book holder, one of those pedestal-type things, and have a Bible in front, opened up, and they're like calling attention to the Bible and suggesting that this is the supreme book or something like that, and occasionally tries to read from it in the class, we got a problem.
But let me ask you this. The problem would be if you are excluding another religion from doing the same thing?
No.
Well...
The problem is, under the First Amendment, it says, "No state shall recognize a particular religion." And it looks as though, by holding out one book, that being the Bible, that we're endorsing Christianity. Man, look, this is a controversial topic. And look, I've lost this argument, too, and it's offensive. The one that sued Bowser, they had a whole group of folks. They came down. The court made us take the depositions at a hotel so that no one would know who the plaintiffs were. I could not even tell the School Board the names of the people that were suing them because they were afraid that their little kids would be bullied and really... You know, I'm not for hurting up itty-bitty. These are grown-up issues, not itty-bitty issues. And so that's the link that the court went to. Now, in Bowser Parish and Webster Parish, a teacher can still wear a cross on their neck. They can have a Bible in a bookshelf, but they cannot assituate or in any way suggest that this one religion is greater than the other. In Sabine Parish, they got in trouble for having a picture of Jesus in the foyer. Now, they could bring in Martin Luther King, Jesus, Gandhi, and put a whole bunch of historical figures there, but they couldn't just have that one, so...
But yet, the state passed that all schools have to have in God's trust in the middle.
Correct. And ACLU hasn't sued us on that yet. So folks, here we go. I was raised in the Baptist church. I got ducked just like most of you in this room. I just, I have to defend and I have to give objective advice based on other cases and doesn't necessarily mean that I agree with that. But you asked a question, Baron.
Oh, and I disagree with it. And if a teacher were to ask me if they could have a Bible, as long as they're not excluding somebody else, I'm okay with it. I would defend them to hail free zone because I lost a Jewish friend for telling them Merry Christmas, and they asked me not to tell them that, and I told them, "Well, that's the only way you're gonna get it from me. I'm not gonna say happy holidays." Because Jill's witness had a problem with holidays, so somebody's gonna be offended somewhere. And I think people that stand on principle need to fight for that and stop being so timid to what...
You know what? Little judge is gonna tell you?
I'll tell him the same thing.
He's gonna tell you, "Bring a toothbrush."
I don't wanna go to jail, but I will if I'm defending what I believe.
I understand. I understand.
And I understand there's a difference between public and private sector. What is it, Act Nine? You know, Title Nine, you know, stuff like that. I agree with that to a certain extent. But outside of that, I don't think nobody can tell me what I can and can't believe in. And if I wanna have a Bible right here, there's no balance. The Board won't stop me from bringing my Bible. Yeah. And if somebody else was a Jewish or Muslim or whatever, I wouldn't have a problem with that because I don't have an issue with what they believe in. But I don't think it should stop me from believing what I believe in just because your feelings are offended.
Remind me not to bring up prayer next time. Anyway, folks, again, thank you for your time. As I look around the room, I've been dealing with Baron since, you know, in my prior life, I represented teachers.
Yeah, we used to go head-to-head.
Yeah, we did. And boy, we had some good ones. But boy, when y'all were at that old room over there, what was funny is it was a tiny, tiny little room, and the door had louvers in it. And people would all huddle up outside the door and listen to the executive session, you know? So I'd say, "Cut the air conditioner off. They want the noise to start to run out." So anyway. Alright, thank y'all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I won't take long. I just wanna show you some updates. We did this last month, and I wanted to make sure that y'all are just knowing what went on. So we have improved the intercom system at the high school. New air conditioning put in at the auditorium at Union Central. We have some leaking problems all in the auditorium, and so thank you, Coach Wells, for making that happen for us. And, oh, the parking lot striped at the high school. Also fixed that big pothole that was there. I didn't talk much about this, but we had some leadership meetings and professional development. Kim's crew was working on adopting a new ELA curriculum. But I do wanna spend some time here. We all got to see Donnie. And so we have a lot of students that we're super proud of here lately. Of course, Donnie participated in the Dream All-American Bowl game. Keesley Ross has committed to play softball at Baton Rouge Community College, and had her signing. Riley Hatton has committed to play softball at East Central Community College. Her signing was today, so I don't have pictures of that. C.J. Rocklemore has committed to play football at Southwest Mississippi Community College. And then Colton Russell, we found out today, he was our 12th grade student of the year. He has been chosen out of seventeen as a top four student at the zone level, and he will participate at the regional level. And so, I know, we just found that out today. So from our zone, we have one from Caldwell Lake in Washita Rapids. And so we were pretty excited to be up there with those bigger parishes. I also wanted to let you know that Colton is a member of the Louisiana Youth Advisory Council, and so his mom takes him to Baton Rouge every other month to participate in that. And his team was selected as one of three teams in the United States. So three teams out of the whole USA were chosen to go to Washington, D.C. at the end of this month to present their project. And so that was huge. I think Sandra said, the ladies said, "They never expected to be chosen," and they were. So Colton and Sandra are going to Washington, D.C. and spend a couple of days there, and he'll get to present his project to Homeland Security. So that's a pretty big feat for a boy from Caldwell Parish. So I mean, Colton is gonna meet with us tomorrow morning, the district strategic team, to present his project to us, and then hopefully we'll be able to approve it for him to go to the elementaries to do it with them so that he can go with some research when he presents. So that's it. I just wanted to share those highlights.
Can I add something to Donnie Brooks? I thought he was asking about the store, and he said they're starting to, a few publications are starting to list them as a three-star.
Nick, I've got a quick question. Being a new board member, I don't know who all does this, but when we went to our new board member training and stuff, they encouraged us to go by and visit our schools and that we just weren't a board member for our particular school. We were board members that represented everyone. And I know when I was a teacher and coach, if a board member's... Like one time, I was at a basketball game, and I had an official try to tell me to tell Baron to be quiet. And I said, "I'm not gonna be quiet with my dang ball. Go somewhere else and get somebody else to do it." But so I'm asking, how do we do that? If we wanted to go somewhere to see all the principals?
I think that any of the elementary, no, I mean, any of the principals would welcome. I would just call them and say, "Hey, when's a good time for me to come and take a look?" I know, I always encouraged when I was a principal, "Come and let me take you on a walk through my school so you can see all the wonderful things going on."
Exactly. On their Facebook pages, I follow all their Facebook pages, the schools. They usually put out a newsletter every month, and so you can see what's going on. So maybe something you could go and attend.
Yeah. Like they have, like, I know today, like at Central, they...
You know what I mean? Board members on campus.
So that would've been a great time to interact with the parents and students and students at the school.
I know they would welcome you to come in and take a look at what's going on. I know that you can't always, and so I've made it my mission that every month, I'm gonna try to highlight some things. I know I send out the district newsletter, but as it comes up, I wanna shout out because y'all have some great things going on in our schools. So I definitely wanna keep adding that to it, just so that if you can't get out, you at least have pictures.
Nick, I got one other thing. I'm gonna wait till the next meeting.
We gonna pee this all up our pants.
I'm ready to go.
I got you.
I'm gonna match your picture.